Our regular city council meeting will now come to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, Honorable City Council members. To our Chief of Staff, Attorney Hitchcock, to Madam Treasurer, Deputy Clerk, Administrative Staff, and public audience, welcome to the City of Romulus City Council Regular Meeting. Today is Monday, July 26, 2021, and at this time, we will have roll call. Councilwoman Abdo.
Here.
Councilman Bardin.
Here.
Councilwoman Roscoe.
Here.
Councilwoman Tally.
Here.
Councilman Wadsworth.
Here.
Councilwoman Webb.
Here.
And I was told that Councilwoman Williams did not be present this evening.
Excuse.
So noted. Mr. Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you.
Tonight's council meeting agenda is as follows. Number one, agenda; number two, minutes; number three, petitioner; number four, chairperson's report; five, mayor's report; six, clerk's report; seven, treasurer's report; eight, public comment; nine, unfinished business; ten, new business; eleven, warrant; number twelve is communication; and number thirteen is adjournment. And a motion being ordered to accept the regular council meeting agenda as presented.
So moved to accept the regular council meeting agenda as presented.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Tally, supported by Ms. Webb, to approve the agenda as presented. Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion approved.
Mr. Chair, before we move on with the agenda, I have just a little announcement for our public audience, those wishing to participate.
Okay.
Those in the audience wishing to participate in this meeting, you may do so under the public comment portion of the agenda. Please fill out a request to speak public comment card, which is located on the table in the back of the chambers, and hand it to the deputy clerk. Those that are viewing may submit comments through email to publiccomment@romulusgov.com. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome, Madam Clerk.
Number two, for approval are the minutes from the regular council meeting held on July 12, 2021.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we approve the minutes from the July 12 meeting of 2021.
Support.
It's been motioned by Mr. Wadsworth, supported by Ms. Abdo, for approval of the minutes from the regular meeting held on July 12, 2021. Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Chair abstained. Motion approved.
There were no special meetings on Monday, July 12. Number three would be petitioner, which we do not have any petitioners on the agenda. Takes us to number four, the chairperson's report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First of all, I'm glad to be back. I want a special thanks for Councilwoman Tally for filling in in my absence. Thanks a lot, Ms. Tally.
My pleasure.
At this time, the Chair is going to recognize Treasurer Stacy Page.
Good evening and thank you. At this time, I would like a resolution for Buck Carney, and then, once that's passed, if I can have a few words.
Support. Okay. And Ms. Roscoe?
Yes, I have a resolution, and it's with great sadness and honor to read the resolution for Gerald Lee Buck, as we all know him, Carney. And it goes, "Whereas the people of the City of Romulus were truly saddened to hear the passing of Buck Carney on July 23, 2021, and whereas Buck Carney was born on May 22, 1976, to Beverly and the late Jerry Carney, beginning a 45-year era of light, life, perseverance, integrity, love, richness, and laughter. An impeccable bond is formed by the birth of his dearest brother Frankie Carney in 1979, allowing Buck to showcase his heart of gold to another individual he knew and saw as family. And whereas Gerald Lee Buck Carney was a hardworking, caring, dedicated, and well-adored employee of the City of Romulus since March of 2004, working primarily in the Department of Public Works, but also assisting various other departments in the city, including the 34th District Court Work Program. When Buck wasn't faithfully working, he could be seen driving his beloved truck. He was known for his love, talent of barbecuing, and enjoyment of hunting, fishing, and NASCAR. Whereas Buck Carney's love of life, friends, and family pales in comparison to his love for his wonderful wife Laura, his fur baby Papa's boy Ruckus, and his love for his heavenly Father and Creator. To the very end, Buck was a faithful member of the Bethany Bible Church and offered all he could so that everyone could see him amplifying the values he stood on and the warming smile given from above. And whereas Buck Carney's death leaves our community and the region with a deep feeling of sorrow for the loss of such a respected citizen, husband, brother, son, family member, and friend. His presence is a space that cannot easily fill or be replaced, and therefore, it is resolved that the honorable elected officials of the City of Romulus express to the family of Gerald Lee Buck Carney their heartfelt sympathy and deep realization of the loss they have sustained, and the hope that they will be consoled by the memories of Buck's fine life achievement. And whereas, further resolved that this memorial resolution shall be presented to the family of Gerald Lee Buck Carney, and it's signed by the Mayor, Leroy Burcroft, our City Clerk, Ellen Bragg, our City Treasurer, Stacy Page, and all of us at City Council. Our thoughts and prayers go out to all the family."
Okay. Mr. Wadsworth?
Just to make a couple of comments, you know, Buck, or Big Buck, as I call him, you know, he was just a fine example of the workers that keep this town going and going. And, you know, we give these resolutions in deference sometime for, you know, 90, 80-year-old people, but this is sad. I mean, only 45, and the Lord reached out for him. But he was a good man, and may he rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Wadsworth. Ms. Page?
To know Buck was to love Buck. He had a faithful heart, and he had a big smile. What I enjoyed most about Buck is watching him over the last couple of years, his relationship with the Lord. He wasn't ashamed to share it. He never hid it. And you could see it in his spirit and the things that he did with his wife, his sickness he gave over to the Lord. It wasn't just sitting in the pews with him on Sunday, but it was in his texts, it was on his post on Facebook. It was his relationship with his wife and the relationships that he had with everyone else. I just ask at this time that if you would keep the family in your prayers, especially his wife Lola, his brother Frank, and his mother Bev. In my opinion, this world would be a much better place if we had more Bucks in it. And I pray for the family. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Any other comments? Just a comment, I'd like to mention Buck was a... Mr. Carney, Mr. Carney is a loving person, first class. Every time you would come across him, he would speak to you. You know, just a wonderful person, and like all the colleagues said, he's going to be very missed, and keep his family in your prayers.
Excuse me, to the Chair. I'm sorry, I was trying to get your attention, because I know yours is usually the last statement.
Okay, go ahead.
I remember when Buck was hired, and he was in the mobile station. And I had chips and a Coke, which I was eating at that time and drinking. And he said, "Mrs. Webb, how are you?" And I said, "I'm fine." And he said, "I'll take care of that for you." You know, we all, we must treat all souls as though they are angels, because we don't know who God has called into His kingdom, and Buck was one of them. Before he dedicated his life to the Lord, he had a good heart, a very good heart. So I am so glad to hear that he attended church with our Treasurer, and she was there as an eyewitness to see how God gave him a measure of faith. And for the family, I pray for your comfort, and I pray for Buck, so... Thank you.
To the Chair.
Yes. Ms. Tally?
I didn't know Buck that well. I just want to say on behalf, because all I'm hearing that he's a man of God, he had faith, and even in a difficult time, all I can say, as many of you have said, we have to pray, and pray for the family. And with him being a believer and knowing God, even though we're going to miss his physical presence, we know where he's at. So we have to take comfort in the fact, we know where Buck is at. And it's hard, because we missed the physical body, but we know where his spirit is, and we have to take comfort in that the Lord know what he's doing, even in this difficult. I had to come to terms with that with my dad, and I'm sure so many of you are here, but, you know, we have to take our confidence in the Lord, like Buck did, and know where he's at. Amen.
Thank you. If there's no other comments, we have a memorial resolution from Ms. Roscoe, supported by Mr. Wadsworth. Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, and motion is approved. At this time, I'm also going to recognize, the Chair is going to recognize Councilman Wadsworth.
Thanks. This is kind of hard to follow up on this, but I want to talk about the Romulus Library. As a member of the board, I want the public to know that the library is alive, it's financially sound, and it's offering many things to both the residents of Romulus and the year-end down gym. You know, we all should be proud as elected officials with Mayor Burcroft and the rest of us. We took a building that was closed, it was locked up, and it got to be reopened again, and it's financially sound. We were supposed to be doing, they were going to expand in November, but unfortunately, the bids, because of the price of building materials, went through the roof, so we kind of postponed that. But that library has so many things to offer for our residents. It's got the use of, of course, other computers, it's got reading programs for kids, and I would urge anybody to go to the Romulus Library website, and every month, a calendar is published, and it talks about what you can do there. It's well worth it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. That concludes the chairperson's report.
Mr. Chair, I'll make that motion to accept your report. Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Ms. Tally, for approval of the chairperson's report. Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion approved. Thank you.
Number five is the mayor's report.
Good evening, City Council, Madam Clerk and Madam Treasurer. I'll be presenting Mayor Burcroft's report this evening. The first item on his agenda, item 5A, is a request for a no-fee road closure for the Romulus Community Baptist Church. You know, we typically have this request every year, and we're thankful that it's in this year. And that request would be to authorize a no-fee permit for the Romans Community Baptist Church, 6204th Street, on August 28, 2021. Subject streets include the Boise Walkway and Colorado Street, from 4th Street to the church property line. And the respective departments that would need to assist with that have signed off on this as well, upon your concurrence.
Mr. Chair, I'll make that motion that we concur with the administration and authorize a no-fee permit for the Romulus Community Baptist Church on August 28. Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Abdo, supported by Mrs. Webb, for a no-fee permit request for the Romulus Community Baptist Church. Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion approved.
Thank you, Council. The next item on the mayor's report, item 5B, is a request to concur with the administration and consent to piggyback on the Florida Sheriff's Association contract, which, if you wish, I'll read all those letters into the record, with Excellence Inc. for the purchase of a 2021 Ford E450 ambulance demo in the amount of $217,740.18.
To the Chair, may I?
Yes, Ms. Webb?
I'd like to make that motion to concur with administration and consent to piggyback with the Florida Sheriff's Association for the contract as stated.
I'm sorry, support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Webb, supported by Ms. Tally, for piggyback on the Florida Sheriff's Association contract for the 2021 Ford E450 ambulance. End discussion. Hearing no discussion, roll call vote. Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion approved.
Thank you, Council. And the next item, item 5C, is a request for introduction of budget amendment 21-22-3, and that is for our Animal Control Department, and that's to recognize the funds being received from the Companion and Animal Welfare Fund grant and the associated expenditures.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for the introduction of budget amendment 21/22-3, and it's a grant in the amount of $4376.
Support.
It's been motioned by Mr. Wadsworth, supported by Ms. Roscoe, for introduction of budget amendment 21/22-3, Animal Control. End discussion. Hearing no discussion, roll call vote. Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion approved.
Thank you, Council, and that will conclude the mayor's report this evening.
Thank you.
Number six is the clerk's report. 6A, for second reading and final adoption, is budget amendment 2122-1, in the amount of $217,740 for fire fleet upgrades to recognize the lease to purchase Fire Rescue Number Two. This budget amendment was introduced at the July 12, 2021, regular council meeting. To the Chair.
Ms. Webb?
I'd like to make that motion for second reading and final adoption of budget amendment 21/22-1, Motor Vehicle Public Safety.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Webb, supported by Ms. Tally, for second reading and final adoption of budget amendment 21/22-1, Motor Vehicle Public Safety. End discussion. Hearing no discussion, roll call vote. Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. That motion is approved.
And 6B, it's just a public notice from MML, their annual meeting, which will be held on September 22 at 4:15 PM, and this is going to be held at the Amway Grand Hotel in Grand Rapids. No action is required, just for your information.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
And to that, Mr. Chair, that concludes the clerk's report.
All right, thank you.
And that takes us to number seven, the treasurer's report.
Good evening, Council, Chief of Staff, Clerk, Deputy Clerk, and listening audience. I do not have anything to report this evening, but of course, if you ever have any questions for the Treasurer's office, you can always contact our office at 734-942-7580. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number eight is public comment, and this is the portion of the agenda for those in the audience who would like to address City Council. The rules to address City Council can be found on the back of the meeting agenda. If you would like to address City Council, please raise your hand, and after being acknowledged by the chairperson, approach the podium and state your name. Please note that members of the public who submitted a public comment card will be called upon first. You will have three minutes to speak. Any additional time will be upon consent from the chairperson. Mr. Chair, this evening, we have one, we have one card that was submitted to speak. We have Cameron Wilson. He's from the Romulus Community Baptist Church.
How you doing? Since it's already been approved, me and my associate here were just talking about it, it was like, it's already been approved. But I just wanted to know if you guys had any questions, I will be available to answer them for each of you today. So if you don't have any questions, or it's already been approved?
Yep.
To the Chair.
Ms. Tally has something.
Thank you for coming representing. Tanya said you was coming, so thanks for coming representing and checking in.
Oh, yeah, most definitely.
Yeah, Mr. Wadsworth?
Just one comment. Sometimes, when you win, it's better not to talk anymore, too.
We was just arguing about that in the background.
Ms. Webb?
Cameron, make sure that, you know, hot dog is burnt.
Okay, okay, okay. Thank you. You get that?
Oh, and the bun is grilled.
Okay, how do you? All right, all right, all right. All right, you guys.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
No problem.
Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak? Okay, Mr. Chair, we do have one written comment that came in through the email.
Okay.
This is from Tony Heimberger, and his comment is, "Since the city has spent the money to update the chamber and the council has returned, the residents should be able to go to Zoom and be part of the meeting. The residents need to have more to say in our city government." So he's requesting to have the ability to join the meeting via Zoom.
Okay.
And we have no more written requests, and no one else has submitted an email, so we can move on if there's nothing else.
Okay. Ms. Abdo?
Is the system available, capable to do that? Yes, but we still need to consult with our cable department, Mike Liskaska, to see, you know, all the, all that's involved, you know, for doing that. Is that something we can look into, then? Sure, we can, I'll get with the Chief of Staff, and we'll talk to our Director of Cable and Communications and see what we can do. You would have to, and to the city attorney, I believe would the council have to vote on that in order for that to happen, or is it just by request?
No, they, it's not required by law to do that, which you certainly could, but that'd be a rule that you would adopt, that you wanted to have some method of electronically allowing the public to communicate with you during the meeting.
It would be under public comment, wouldn't it?
Yes, they still would, it still would be under public comment, that they would address the council.
Can we have, like, Mr. Liskaska come to us, or at least present how that would happen?
We'd have to talk to the Chief of Staff.
Yes, I'll be happy to have him get some information together.
Yeah, maybe we can see how we can do that and increase our audience.
And I'll work with the city attorney on that as well. I don't know how that would impact our other boards, but we'll definitely get a response back for you, absolutely.
Thank you.
If there's no other comments from the audience, Madam Clerk, we'll close their part out.
All right, that takes us to number nine, unfinished business. Number 10 is new business.
Yeah. Wadsworth?
If I can, and I hope I don't offend anybody on this, but I came in last week, and I've seen 51 years of Romulus history taken down off the walls. And, you know, I think it's disrespectful for the elected officials that have served in the past. You know, sometimes they bring in their grandkids, their relatives to show where Grandma or Grandpa served, and I understand that there was an issue with the cable camera or something, but that should be worked out, I'm only one person, but those pictures should go back on the wall. When, you know, that's how I feel about it. The rest of you want to express how you feel, go ahead. If not, then leave them alone.
Well, I agree with you, Mr. Wadsworth. Most chambers, or most political venues, do have their former, especially part of legislative body, their pictures are still there, but I don't know the reasoning why it was taken down. Matter of fact, I just noticed. So, but, but you have a great idea, because we do have people's grandchildren, our great-grandchildren who are coming here, and, yeah, I have, I don't know how to comment on it other than I would like to see those portraits back up here.
Because, you know, some of them, people have passed on, too, and I remember when they did the Nate Butler thing here that day, how they were showing little kids certain people on the wall, and I just think that they should go back up.
Oh, I agree, because one day, me and you will be.
If there's a problem with the cameras or something, then fix it.
If I may, through the Chair, just to respond.
Yes, Madam Clerk.
So we will work on that. Councilman Wadsworth, one of the issues, when trying to put everything together and the new equipment, and then we saw we're kind of running out of space here, you know, adding all the pictures, so, you know, we decided, well, how can we, you know, still keep the pictures? It's not, you know, we're going to hang them up downstairs so that at least we would have room, so that at least you could see the pictures, but once we get to here, we're running out of space because we have a screen. So what we could do, I'll work with the Chief of Staff as well, and so we can get the pictures back up, but please note, we won't be able to get all of them. We're running out of space, so we'll just kind of...
I would put back up what you have, and when we get to the, I see more space, I see a second line over there. I just think it's part of the history of our city, and it should be on display.
Right. There was no disrespect meant by it. We said, well, we can, we were trying to spruce up the chambers as well, and we said we would place them downstairs, at least, you know, kind of a nostalgic thing, so, but we can work on it. No, we will work on that and get those pictures back up for you. I agree. Mr. Wadsworth? As many that will fit. If there's no more new business, it takes us to number 11, warrant. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion, we pay warrant 21-14 in the following amounts: General Fund, $82,077.64; Major Street Fund, $16,948.62; Local Street Fund, $8,172.72; Public Safety Fund, $31,037.84; Cable TV, $210.29; Mayorman Road Special Assessment, $7,746.50; Street Lighting Fund, $47,549.40; Oakwood SAD, $197.16; Garbage and Rubbish Collection Fund, $92,100.98; 9/11 Service Fund, $1,749.87; NARC Forfeiture State, $1,536.1 cent; Library Fund, $20,175.89; DDA, $19,314.11; Tifa District 2, $17,069.54; Water and Sewer Fund, $913,406.81; Motor Vehicle, $120,015.95; Technology Services, $48,720.72; Retiree Insurance Benefits, $999.46; Property and Liability Insurance, $554,587; Revolving Funds, $785; Current Tax, $451.66; Delinquent Personal Property Fund, $118,411.91; Payroll Fund, $110,577.85; Totalling All Funds, $2,213,842.57. Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Abdo, supported by Ms. Tally, to pay warrant number 21-14 for $2 million. End discussion. Hearing no discussion, roll call vote. Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Wasworth?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, and motion is approved.
Number 12 is communication. To the chair.
Ms. Tally?
Couple of things. First, I want to just make an announcement for the Five Points Church out here on, at Five Points off Garter. They are looking for a worship leader. If anybody has experience or know of anyone who has that experience, please contact Five Points Church at 734-941-1511, and that'd be Pastor Bowen, James Bowen, who is the senior pastor at Five Points Church. And the other thing, which is very coincidental, we're talking about the Carney family in grief and, and his passing. They, and this is what I was going to read tonight for Five Point Church as well, they have a grief support group called Grief Share, and their flyer, I have a flyer here that says, "After the funeral, when the cards and flowers have stopped coming, when most of the people around you return to their normal lives, but your grief continues and you feel alone." This is a grief network, this church has a Grief Share program that helps people deal with grief, and if anyone is interested in it, the same information for the Five Points Church, you can contact them at 734-941-1511 for anyone that's dealing through grief, with grief, and the passing of loved ones. We've seen a lot of that with COVID here, and I'm not sure how a lot of people deal with grief. I know how I deal with it, I pray other people do the same, but, you know, there's resources out there to help, you know? So if, if you need a resource, please contact the Five Points Church regarding their grief program, they are definitely here to help. So I just want to put that out there. The other thing is that we've had numerous ribbon cuttings and grand openings in our city in the last several weeks. I want to do a shout-out to Yada Phillips. I'm surprised she's not in the council chambers this evening, but she had a grand opening this past Thursday for her business on, she's on Wayne Road. So anybody, just want to just shout-out to Yada for opening up her business here in the City of Romulus, and all the businesses who choose Romulus to open up their businesses. We thank you for that. And then lastly, I had a resident call me, and he lives on 4th Street, and he calls me and he says, "Tina, there's this beautiful picture out on Boise Parkway." And I'm like, "What is it?" And he said, "I don't know, it's just beautiful." So I called Tanya, and I said, "Tanya, there's this beautiful picture on Boise, I don't know what it looks like," but I get a resident said, "It's beautiful." So the DIA has distributed different photos, or portraits, out in our community. So you can go by Boise Parkway, there you will see one there, there's one, I think, here at the City Hall, there's one at the Senior Center, there's one at the Rack, and there's one at the Historical Park. I have bad awareness, so I didn't see anything until she brought, he brought it to my attention. So take a peek around our city. I thought that was very encouraging. He was so pleased to see this picture out on Boise Parkway off, off 4th Street. So just take note of these things that's going on in our communities. We always want to talk about the good stuff that's happening, so just want to take notice of that, what's going on in our city. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And to the chair, if I may?
Yes.
If I may comment on those paintings as well. I believe before, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Chief of Staff, Judge Oakley, Maria Lambert, were all involved in that when we, when the DIA first came to the city in regards to putting those paintings out there. So I'm really glad that they are out there in the community so people can truly, truly appreciate the artwork.
Yes.
Any more communications? No more communications?
Takes us to number 13, adjournment, and the time is 8:08 PM. Support.
It's been motioned by Mr. Wasworth, supported by Ms. Roscoe, for adjournment. Mr. Wasworth?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, we are adjourned.